Well, thank you very much.
All I could do is just relay the message.
I love your story, Todd. It's been doing cute.
I think we're live again.
We're live again.
Okay. Okay.
Okay, we're currently recessed, but give me just a minute, see what I can do here.
Okay.
Okay. All right. Let's give it a go again.
Okay.
So I think we were on two C on our solid waste agenda.
I have a motion second on the JVs.
Okay, so I'll ask for a roll call, please.
Vicky?
Yes.
Sabrina?
Yes.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Move to approve the April 2nd, 2020, then announce certification as presented by the county auditor.
I will second.
Roll call, Amy.
Vicky?
Yes.
Brina?
Yes.
Kathleen?
Yes.
I'll make a motion to adjourn solid waste.
Suck up.
Roll call, Amy.
Brina?
Yes.
Vicky?
Yes.
Kathleen?
Yes. So reconvene our general session. And we will start with job and family services if Sue is available and ready. Do we have any word from Sue?
She texted me this morning.
That she was, that she knew to try to dial in?
Yeah, Todd just texted us or emailed us the financial review sheet.
Oh, great. Um. Did she respond when you texted her, Amy?
She, yes, she said, okay, we were just talking about the time, though.
Okay.
I'll get her.
Okay. Let's pause and wait for Sue to join us from job and family services. Hello?
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 Wow. Sorry, it wouldn't let me unmute my phone when I called in.
That's okay.
You sound good now. Yeah, okay, good.
Okay, thanks. Bye.
All right, so the first thing on the agenda is our transfer, our regular monthly transfer in the amount of thirty four oh four fifty one for mandated share from the commissioners to the public assistance fund for April.
Okay, I will second.
I didn't hear the motion.
I, nobody, motion that I know of, I mean.
I'm sorry. I gotta call.
It's okay.
So, go ahead.
Move that the Board of Commissioners agrees, transfer thirty thousand four oh four point five one from Fund zero 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 one, General Fund to Fund fourteen ten, Public Assistance Fund.
I will second.
Roll call, Amy.
Vicky?
Yes.
Brina?
Yes.
Kathleen?
Yes. Okay, so the second one is just an acceptance of a cash donation, a donation of five hundred dollars from private individuals for our Pathways to Independent Scholarship Fund.
A move that the Board of Commissioners accept the cash donation of five hundred dollars from private individuals for the Portage County Job and Family Services Pathways to Independent Scholarship Fund.
I will second.
Roll call, Amy.
Vicky?
Yes.
Sabrina?
Yes.
Kathleen?
Yes. And Sue, I can stop you right here, are the rest of your resolutions donations? Yes. That's what I have on my list. We don't need you to explain those to us because they're self-explanatory in the header, so we appreciate you jumping on. Is there anything else that you needed to update us on? Nope, I don't think so, everything's pretty smooth down here. All right, great, thanks so much for all you're doing and we'll proceed through the rest of your agenda with the donations. All right, great, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Move that the Board of Commissioners accept the cash donations of seventy eight dollars from Portage County JFS employees for March dress down date to support Portage JFS employee enhancement activities.
I'll second.
Roll call, Amy.
Vicky?
Yes.
Sabrina?
Yes.
Kathleen? Yes.
Move that the Board of Commissioners accepts the cash donations of one, one hundred fifty four dollars from Portage County JFS employees for February dress down days to support Portage JFS employees enhancement activities.
I'll second.
Roll call, Amy.
Vicky?
Yes.
Sabrina?
Yes.
Kathleen? Yes.
Move that the Board of Commissioners accepts the cash donation of two hundred thirty nine dollars and thirty six cents from Portage County JFS employees to support Penny's For Presents campaign for children in Portage County JFS custody.
I'll second.
Roll call, Amy.
Vicky?
Yes.
Sabrina?
Yes.
Kathleen?
Yes. Okay, now we can move on to Internal Services and Joanne. We'll wait for her to join us. Amy, are you reaching out to her?
Yes.
Great.
Okay, thank you. Okay, bye. She's muted. Can you unmute her?
No, she's not in the meeting yet. Well, yep, it's actually five participants. See what we got.
Um, unmuted, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Yes.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you, can you hear us?
I certainly can, yep.
Great.
All right, well, we'll move to my.
Ready to go for ya.
Okay, we'll go to my resolutions, the first one I have is an acceptance of bids for the county engineer that we took on March the twenty fifth for bituminous liquids. And of course, we're awarding to the low bidders.
Okay.
Move that the Board of Commissioners accepts bids for various bituminous liquids for use by the Portage County Engineer.
I will second.
Roll call, Amy.
Vicky?
Yes.
Sabrina?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, the second resolution is for various bituminous materials for bids that we took again on March twenty fifth for the county engineer. And there were actually two, four, six vendors that were able to partake in the bid with their pricing. So we're awarding to all of those.
Move that the Board of Commissioners accepts bids for various bituminous materials for use by the Portage County Engineer.
I will second.
Roll call, Amy.
Vicky?
Yes.
Sabrina?
Yes.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Okay, number three is we accepted bids on March twenty fifth for guard rail and their curved end treatments. One bidder, Fireline, Fireland Supply was the low bid, and that's who we're going to award to.
Move that the Board of Commissioners accepts bid for furnishing guard rail and curved end treatments for use by the Portage County Engineer.
I will second.
Roll call, Amy.
Vicky?
Yes.
Second.
Kathleen?
Yes.
I'm sorry.
All righty, then, next one is for receiving, we received bids on March twenty fifth for storm sewer pipe. There are two bids that we're accepting here, one is for steel pipe with corn mane, and the second one is for plastic pipe from Marlboro Supply.
Commissioners accepts bids for furnishing various sizes of storm sewer pipe for use by the county engineer.
I will second.
Roll call, Amy.
Vicky?
Yes.
Brina?
Yes.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Okay, the next one is for furnishing metal bridge flooring and the beams for the engineer of bids that we took on March the twenty fifth as well. One bidder came in as the low, and that's Ohio Bridge Corporation.
Move that the Board of Commissioners accepts bid for furnishing corrugated metal bridge flooring and bridge replacement beams for use by the Portage County Engineer.
I will second.
Roll call, Amy.
Vicky?
Yes.
Sabrina?
Yes.
Kathleen?
Yes. I'm gonna pause you for a second, Joanne.
Sure.
We have a, we have a problem with the livestream.
All right.
Just recess for a moment while we figure out a technical issue. Okay, I think we're okay. Hold just a minute. Okay. We are back in business, sorry for the delay, everyone. Joanne, you can pick back up with number six.
All right, um, the next one resolution is to accept and award the bid for inmate food services. We had five providers request bid specs, we received three, and the low bid was the current carrier that we're using, Aramark Correctional Services. So this is the resolution to award.
Do we do that on an annual basis, or is it every three?
This, this is every five.
Oh, every five, okay.
Every five years, yes ma'am, and I also wrote in to the resolution that Aramark is to take care of and maintain and repair the dishwasher that we bought five years ago. That's part of the deal.
Move that the Board of Commissioners accepts and award the bid for providing inmate food services for the Portage County Sheriff.
I will second.
Roll call, Amy.
Vicky?
Yes.
Brina?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, the next resolution is to set bid date for a resurfacing project for the county engineer, and it's going to be doing portions of diagonal, industry, Cook, and Newton Falls roads.
Motion that the Board of Commissioners approves plans and specifications and set date for accepting bids for the twenty twenty four zero five resurfacing project for the resurfacing of various Portage County roads.
I will second.
Roll call, Amy.
Vicky?
Yes.
Brina?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, and the last resolution I have is to set the bid date for resurfacing the four forty one project, which is portions of Sunnybrook, Ryan Field, and Congress Lake roads.
Okay, move that the Board of Commissioners approves plans and specifications and set date for accepting bids for the twenty twenty four four one resurfacing project for the resurfacing of various Portage County roads.
I will second.
Roll call, Amy.
Vicky?
Yes.
Sabrina?
Yes.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Okay, um, next, I wanted to talk with you folks about the Board of Elections and their requests for the mailbox and the monitoring. Faith had called me this morning, and I don't think she was going to dial in, she was just gonna have me speak to the issue, but I think you saw the correspondence that came from the Secretary of State saying that they need to have a secure mailbox placed at our facility, and we also have to have it monitored twenty-four seven. So currently, I believe we have a space that we can use, and I reached out to the, to our, uh, camera folks about putting a camera on those, that box out there, and they're supposed to get back to me today with the cost and the timeframe basically is what I want to know of how soon that they can get that put out. I talked with Faith this morning, and depending on how long it may take for the camera work to get done, currently, they're taking a box outside and bringing it in every night. We may have to do that until we've got a secure piece set up, but I'm trying to get that all expedited. And she, they just wanted you guys to be aware of this, and I told them I didn't feel that you guys would have any objection for us moving forward to getting these things set up for them.
No, I think it's a good idea.
Yeah, I do too, and I'm glad, you know, you're close to having a, a solution in place.
And you know, a lot of people were concerned that their only option was to mail it in, so this is a, a, a better option for them, for those that are concerned about the mail, getting the ballots turned back in.
Well, well, yes, and yesterday, I think we spent probably three hours putting tapes, postage tape on their return envelopes that they're putting in with the ballots. It, you know, it's a pretty tedious job, but we, we've got almost five hundred of them done for them so that they can put those in envelopes that will help offset some of the people not having to drive actually here and put them in the box. So, we're working on both ends, trying to get, you know, it most convenient for folks.
Thank you, Joanne, that's so helpful to people who want to participate in the election.
Exactly. And I think that's all I had unless you guys have something else for me.
No, can I ask you on this employee matter, would?
Yes.
Do you need a journal entry for that? And I think we have the text of the journal entry on our agenda.
You do, and yes, I would like to have the journal entry done today.
So, I'll go ahead and move that the Board of Commissioners agrees to accept the termination of maintenance to worker for Portage County Internal Services effective April second, twenty twenty.
I'll second.
Roll call, Amy.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Sabrina?
Yes.
Vicky?
Yes.
Yeah. We do want your vote. Okay, Joanne, I think we're all set.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Bye.
Bye. I think Todd's muted.
I think you're lurking there, Todd, can, I think you might be muted, though, let me unmute you.
There he is, he's unmuted.
I think, yeah, are you there?
Oh, good, yep. I can hear ya.
Um, did you get my email with the bill review?
Yes.
Yes.
So, again, looking at that, the only thing somewhat unusual is those medical mutual claims of three million dollars, but that is several months worth of payments, so it's each, each month is within the normal amounts. Aside from that, though, everything looks normal, the, the bill amount of four hundred and forty-eight is actually a little low, but that's common for this time of year. And then the journal vouchers and the then and nows are all fairly standard and in line with what we should be expecting.
Okay.
Todd, about how many months is that?
Uh, it's three, three months, six payments.
Okay. Thank you.
Can you guys give me just a minute to get to the spot in my packet? Todd, were, were you supposed to be?
This morning?
Email.
No, no, I mean for his resolution.
He was originally supposed to be at nine thirty.
Okay, so after that, after Joanne's stuff?
Yeah.
I printed double-sided, so it's making it a little trickier. Do we have the listing like we usually do?
Yes.
My packet, it was after HR, but we changed the sequence.
Oh, I got it, fine, hold on, I see. See the beginning? Oh, yeah, hold on, I'm close.
Yeah, we didn't move his time, he's still at nine thirty.
I knew this would happen, I'm sorry, guys. Yeah, I got it, I got it. Okay, sorry, Todd.
Oh, no problem, so again.
We can go ahead and do the first four, right?
Yeah, the first four are fairly standard, nothing out of the ordinary.
Okay.
Uh, move that the Board of Commissioners agrees to approve the Thursday, April second, twenty twenty bills ACH payments as presented by the county auditor and reviewed by the Board of Commissioners, Department of Budget and Financial Management, Department of Internal Services, or other designee.
I will second.
Roll call, Amy.
Vicky?
Yes.
Sabrina?
Yes.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Move that the Board of Commissioners agrees to approve the Thursday, April second, twenty twenty wire transfers for health benefits as presented by the county auditor and reviewed by the Board of Commissioners, Department of Budget and Financial Management, Department of Internal Services, or other designee.
I will second.
Roll call, Amy.
Vicky?
Yes.
Brina?
Yes.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Move that the Board of Commissioners agrees to approve the Thursday, April second, twenty twenty journal vouchers as presented by the county auditor and reviewed by the Board of Commissioners, Department of Budget and Financial Management, Department of Internal Services, or other designee.
I will second.
Roll call, Amy.
Vicky?
Yes.
Sabrina?
Yes.
Yes.
Move that the Board of Commissioners agrees to approve the Thursday, April second, twenty twenty, then announce certification as presented by the county auditor and reviewed by the Board of Commissioners, Department of Budget and Financial Management, Department of Internal Services, or other designee.
Okay, I will second.
Roll call, Amy.
Vicky?
Yes.
Sabrina?
Yes.
Kathleen?
Yes. All right, Todd. To the EMA, cash advance. I know, we lost Todd. Give him a minute, maybe he got disconnected. Bet you, Amy.
There he is.
Guys, sorry about that, I got kicked out.
Sorry, Todd, I don't know what happened, I didn't do it, I swear.
All right, did you get through?
We don't have your video, are you videoing, but we just can't see it, or you just call in?
I did, what I'm doing right now is I'm trying to run my VPN and my regular because you guys won't show up in the VPN, and the video is adding too much, so I did turn my video off right now.
Okay, that's fine.
And I'm not sure, I'll work on that for next week, I think it's my internet is being bogged down. So did you get the first four?
Yes.
Yeah, we're past the first four, and now we're on to five on the EMA.
Okay, yeah, that's just a two hundred and fifty thousand, we had budget commission certify an extra two hundred and fifty thousand. This is an advance, if it doesn't get spent, it will be pulled back, but it does at least give them the opportunity to spend should that need arise. Again, our hope is that we don't come anywhere close to that amount, but if we do, hopefully it will also be reimbursable.
Okay.
And Todd, we should use the one that was emailed.
The two hundred and fifty thousand.
Okay, because the one in the packet is two forty, so it came later, but it's the same, the same header.
Yeah, just for two hundred and fifty thousand, originally the, and that's why we have to do the general fund amendment, I hadn't counted on two of JFS's transfers occurring this week, and I didn't see them till the agenda came out, so we had to adjust some things.
Okay. Okay, move that the Board of Commissioners approve the cash advance from Fund zero 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 one, General Fund, to Fund eleven sixty-six, EMA for two hundred and fifty thousand.
I'll second.
Roll call, Amy.
Vicky?
Yes.
Sabrina?
Yes.
Kathleen? Yes.
The number six is the budget amendment that supports that cash. The number six is the budget amendment that supports that cash advance. It also supports the 500,000 that we previously did to solid waste, if you'll recall that. Uh, that was about a month ago, and so that's why this is for 750,000.
Okay.
Move that the Board of Commissioners agrees to amend the non-general fund 2020 annual appropriation resolution number 19-0948, adopted December 19th, 2019.
I'll second.
Roll call, Amy.
Vicky?
Yes.
Sabrina?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Uh, seven, eight, and nine are, um, and I'm just realizing, wait, seven, eight, nine are transfers for water and sewer. 52 is your sewer, 54 is your water, number eight, and number nine is the Streetsboro Sewer. These are to the bond, uh, debt payment funds so that they can pay their debts coming up here in, uh, May and June.
Todd, do we have resolution on those?
Uh, they were forwarded to Julie. I didn't see if the entire resolutions got in your packets.
Yeah, they're, I got them in mine.
You do? The original packet?
Yeah.
Yeah, I had them also.
Yeah. Maybe they're on the backside of something.
I've got it, I'm sorry.
Okay, move that the Board of Commissioners agree to transfer 1,424,887.32 from Fund 5200 PCS General Administration to Funds 5211, 5212, 5214, 5215, 5216, 5217, 5218, 5244, 5245, 5246, 5275, 5278, 5279, 5280.
I will second.
Roll call, Amy.
Vicky?
Yes.
Sabrina?
Yes.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Move that the Board of Commissioners agrees to transfer 152,028.76 from Fund 5400 PCW General Administration to Funds 5413, 5415.
I will second.
Roll call, Amy.
Vicky?
Yes.
Sabrina?
Yes.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Move that the Board of Commissioners agrees to transfer 523,961.66 from Fund 5600 STS General Administration to Funds 5642, 5675, 5676.
I will second.
Roll call, Amy.
Vicky?
Yes.
Sabrina?
Yes.
Kathleen?
Yes.
We had an add-on, Todd.
Yes. There's an add-on?
Yeah, please add to your agenda.
Did we already do that add-on?
You know, he mentioned the figure 750,000.
Yeah, that was the one.
And number five, was the 500 added to that?
Um.
Yeah, that was.
500 is solid waste.
Yeah.
Yeah, 500 is solid waste and the 250 for EMA.
Okay, so that was in number five?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, I think that's it.
Okay. So is Todd Pete's here?
Yeah, he's there.
I think he's been here.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Here, you want me to sit in front of him?
Still here, Todd?
Yeah, still here. Trying to stay safe.
Hello there.
Ah ha, I see you.
Hey, Todd.
Okay, Todd, can you present your item to us, please?
The Mogadore Village Annexation Project. We're talking about the Mogadore Village Annexation. That basically is like a very small lot that they had, they had thought they had annexed in 2007. And apparently that didn't all get filed because there was an error in the legal description of some sort. Uh, they have since resolved that. The, they provided a resolution. They provided the updated, uh, legal description, which has been accepted by TaxMap. And now the last step to that is the Commissioners have to approve the annexation. The odd thing about this is when this all, this all happened, the auditor still shows it as being in, um, Southfield Township. But everybody else, including Mogadore and even us in Southfield, have had that parcel in Mogadore. So this is cleaning up an error. As I believe the parcel's not very big. It's like an acre or something like, or less than an acre. And, um, it's completely surrounded by the village of Mogadore as it is, so, you know, I wrote a resolution to accept the annexation.
And what other, um, bodies have approved this amendment already?
Um, the village of Mogadore has approved it as well as, um, TaxMap, who reviewed the legal description, which I think is where the problem was before. But nobody went back to fix it and bring it back to the Commissioners.
Okay.
Ready?
Yeah.
Move that the Board of Commissioners agrees to amend Resolution Number 07-0685 dated July 10, 2007. Resolution granting regular annexation of 1.419 acres of land from Southfield Township to the village of Mogadore, regular annexation.
Okay, I will second.
Roll call, Amy.
Is Amy muted?
No.
Amy, we said roll call. Can you hear us?
Oh, he.
Uh oh. Todd's muted.
Yeah, I muted myself.
Okay.
Hold on, Todd. Look, we need Amy on because.
Muted. Wait.
Can you hear us, Amy? No. Nothing changed, so I'm not, was Todd using your?
Okay, have Todd unmute himself.
Yeah, have Todd unmute.
Todd brag, Todd?
No, sorry, Todd. It was, you shouldn't unmute because we need to pause the meeting because if Amy can't hear us, we can't meet. So, I mean, because she can't do minutes.
Todd is muted, right?
We didn't mute you. It just, it's been hearing.
Yeah, well, that's what it's saying. Todd's on. But Amy got muted somehow.
Todd Bragg, are you muted?
Yes.
Now we got the miler to sign, I think.
All right. Sabrina, can you ask, let's recess.
Okay.
In place. Can you ask Amy to hang up and call back in?
Yes.
Okay.
Hey, Amy? Can you?
Oh, there's Lloyd.
Can't hear you. Can you hear us? Well, this works, but it is not without many hiccups.
Lloyd? Lloyd, can you hear us?
Oh.
Still connecting. Can you hear us?
How about?
Connected.
Yay.
Hear us now?
Yep. Good job, Lloyd.
There's Amy.
Okay, so I missed the whole.
It's okay. We were just recessing, waiting for you because we know we can't do anything if you can't hear us. Where did you stop? Oh, you can't hear now?
We just need a roll call.
Amy, we, oh, maybe that's Sabrina that we can hear that through.
Yeah, he's walking past my office. There he is.
No. Hey, Jim.
Want to meet with Jim?
Guest appearance.
Guest appearance. He didn't realize.
Coffee next. Wonder what's happening.
We're just gonna, because we're recording.
Okay. Oh. Okay. Get me to. Can you guys hear Amy? Are you gonna go ahead?
Watch Amy's video.
Yeah, she's gonna have to do it, the roll call through mine. Yeah. Can we make a motion for the first and the second for the annexation again, Amy asked?
Yeah.
Vicky, I think you made the motion.
Yes.
Okay, can you repeat it again for Amy?
Move that the Board of Commissioners agrees to amend Resolution Number 07-0685 dated July 10, 2007. Resolution granting regular annexation of 1.419 acres of land from Southfield Township to the village of Mogadore, regular annexation.
I'll second.
Roll call, Amy.
Vicky?
Yes.
Sabrina?
Yes.
Kathleen?
Yes. Todd, can you click in for a minute?
Yeah.
Are you guys ready for me yet?
Um, no, hold on a second.
Okay.
Todd? Did we, your add-on was included when we read the resolution for the general fund appropriation, right? We don't need to do a separate add-on.
Well, that's what I was just calling back in because I'm not sure. There should have been a non-budget, non-general fund budget amendment, and there should have been a general fund budget amendment. I think you only did one, but I've been getting kicked out here, so I'm not entirely sure. I emailed you the non-one again. The non should have been what was in the original packet for 250,000. And then the general fund was the add-on I emailed for 750,000.
Okay.
Okay, so the 250 is separate from the 750, Todd?
That's correct. What, because if you notice, that 250 goes to, um, 1166, so it's a non-general fund.
Okay, so we do need to do that add-on.
So the 750?
Yes, you should approve both a non and a general fund budget amendment today.
Okay.
That's what I was checking back in to make sure got done.
Isn't that what we did in six, in five and six? We did a cash?
We did a cash advance, and then you did do one of the budgets.
We did the non-general fund. Yeah, we did an amendment to the non-general.
So that was for 250?
General. We need non and general.
Yeah, so now you still need to read the general fund for the 750.
Okay.
Okay, move that the Board of Commissioners agrees to amend the general fund 2020 annual appropriation resolution number 19-0947, adopted December 19.
750.
19 for 750,000.
I will second.
Is that correct, Todd?
Yes.
Yeah, right.
Okay. Roll call, Amy.
Vicky?
Yes.
Sabrina?
Yes.
Kathleen?
Yes.
And I think that's it for me, then.
Okay, thank you, Todd. Okay, Janet.
Okay, yeah, I keep getting kicked off, too, so hopefully, hopefully this'll work.
Okay. Did you try videoing, or does it, did it work for you?
I, I just tried, um, calling in, using the phone number for now.
Okay.
Yes, I don't know if it's easier if I video it in, but for now, I just, I just called in.
Okay.
So we'll try. Um, the first thing on my agenda is just to update you on the county administrator letters of interest I received, and then also begin the scheduling, or at least. letters of interest I received, and then also begin the scheduling, or at least begin the discussion of scheduling the interviews.
Janet, can you give me just a minute to find my place?
Yeah.
I had it ready, and then I rifled through everything again.
Yeah, I marked mine last night, because I knew I would have this problem.
That was smart.
Yeah.
I got it, I got it, okay.
Okay, well, we received five letters of interest from five-year directors.
Mm-hmm.
And then the next step would be scheduling the interviews, and I don't know how you want to proceed. I don't know if you want the interviews in person, over the phone, or when you want them.
Wow.
Just kind of get a feel for what you want, and then I could, then I could schedule them based on whatever you want.
I have a thought, um, but I'm open, obviously, to what you guys think. I, I think we should interview everybody that applied. Um, since there are, you know, our, our current directors and
Yes.
Obviously, a good group of applicants. Um, I would think that we could do those interviews in executive session, is that right, Janet?
Mm-hmm, yes, yes, that's right.
Okay. So we could, um, do that at our next meeting. Uh, we could try doing it through video, although I would really want the people to video, not just call in. Um, which I know it might be tricky, but I, I would think we could schedule everyone for a 30-minute interview, since it's so many people, and we do know them all well.
Mm-hmm.
Um, at our, at our next meeting, would be, let me throw that out there as a proposal, a 30-minute interview for each applicant by video in executive session at our next meeting. What do you guys think?
Do you think that would be good, or do you think maybe trying to do it on the seventh? I know on the schedule for the outline, we said we could do it at either meeting, but since it's gonna be a half hour for each person, I mean, it doesn't matter to me, but, so then we could just.
Does that mean a special meeting, Sabrina? I'm just not looking at the calendar. Yeah, so you're saying a Tuesday.
That would have to be a, a special meeting, or we'd have to advertise that we were gonna do it. Interviews and executive session. But yes, we would have to advertise April 7.
So we have five?
Five.
Five of them? So it would be two and a half hours. I'm fine with that. Does that work for?
Yeah.
Yeah.
You guys to do the seven? Do you wanna do 9:00 AM?
Sure.
Sure.
We'll start at nine, okay. Okay, and do you need anything else from me besides the letter of interest that I sent you? Do you want a copy of the job description?
Yeah, I'd like a copy of that.
One of the things we've done in the past is we've created a list of questions, so that each candidate gets asked the same, like, pertinent questions. Not that you can't ask anything that's off the script. So I don't know if you wanna do that, or how you wanna handle that, as far as the interview goes. So it has somewhat structure, but.
Do we each wanna come up with, like, two or three questions that we would like to ask, and then send them to Janet, and she can compile them, and if they're kind of duplicative, she can make a list of them?
I think that's a good idea.
Okay, good.
Okay.
Janet, can you kind of eyeball? I'm sure we'll have some similarities, and you can edit.
Mm-hmm, yeah, I can, absolutely.
Combine, you know, if it, as needed. Half hour will go pretty quick. Um, let's schedule them with a 10-minute buffer, uh, so that somebody isn't dialing in to somebody else's interview, and to work out any technical, uh, kink.
Okay.
Is that Tuffy?
I know.
I know.
I think it's Janet's dog.
I'm so sorry. I have myself locked in a bedroom, and obviously, he doesn't like it. I'm so sorry.
That's okay.
I was.
You know, Tuffy came in here, and I was gonna put him on the screen for Amy, but I thought I better not do that.
Yeah. I'm like, I'm so sorry.
No, don't worry about it. Starting normal.
I know, it is. Um, the next item on my, on my agenda is discussing the Family First Coronavirus Response Act. Um, I did send you a copy of the summary that Chris McDurry and I worked on. I wanted you to at least see that. What, what my goal is, is that once, at least you have a chance to review it, then I would like to send that out to the department heads, elected officials, later on today. Um, along with the Department of Labor poster that's required to be posted, and then also the frequently asked questions. Those, those documents that I put together.
Yeah, I thought that was very good, Janet. You did a great job on that.
Well, we'll have to say, at least for the questions and answers, actually came from the Department of Labor website.
Oh, okay.
I just, I picked in, and I chose which questions related, because there were some, like, questions about small businesses and so forth. Obviously, those,
Yeah.
you know, I didn't add those to the doc, to the document. Um, but just a couple of things I just need clarified. Um, in regards to the act itself, and I don't know if you have it in front of you, but for underneath the sick leave provision for items four, five, and six, eligible employees will pay two-thirds of their wage if they would, if they would take the 80 hours of the emergency, of the emergency sick leave.
Yes.
Do you, does the board want to allow employees to supplement the rest of it with their accrued leave? That would be the third. A third of their leave would be to allow employees, if they want, they could supplement using their own paid leave.
I would be okay with that.
Yeah.
Yeah. Is, is that what you're seeing, Janet? I mean, I, I can't imagine not, but.
Yeah, and I would, and I would say, yeah, because the, the two-thirds is required with, with the federal act. And then to help the employees, they get actually use the rest of their balance of their accrued leave. Yeah, so I, I probably would recommend that, and, but it would be up to the employees. If some, if they don't want to do it, they don't have to do it.
Okay.
Janet, I had a question of, I am assuming that if we adopt this, then it replaces our, uh, temporary public health emergency leave policy. Is that correct?
It, this federal act is only for employees or family members specific to COVID. So they have to have, they have to actually have an order to be quarantined or seeking medical diagnosis regarding. So this is, like, specific to COVID, where our policy says cold or flu-like symptoms. So it can get a little, it can get a little confusing, because our, our emergency.
Did our policy have an end date?
Yes.
Yeah, it did. April 3?
Yeah, April 3, yeah.
Oh, 3.
I'm sorry, what was it, Janet?
Oh, April 3.
Okay. So my, my thinking is that this that on the leave policy, I'm glad we were able to put that in place, because there wasn't anything like this at that time.
Right.
But letting the leave policy that we put in place that was temporary expire
Fire, yeah.
now that we have this uh, to put in place. The only thing that concerns me is there is one area, I believe, where our policy was a little broader, and that had to do with employees who are immunocompromised uh, or have underlying pre-existing conditions that want to, uh, use their own leave to self-isolate. Um, we had that in our policy, and Janet, correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't think that's in the family's first policy.
Right, it's not, right.
Do they have?
Is that the? Go ahead.
Do they have to be, actually have the COVID-19 for this policy to be in effect, this?
Uh-huh.
Because a lot of coaches may have it and not know it yet. I mean, I would hate to see them come to work if they haven't been diagnosed. I mean, I don't.
Spread it, start the symptoms.
Yeah, the act is very specific, and it does say that the employee is either, either they have been ordered um, based on either federal, state, or local quarantine, or they've been advised by their doctor to self-quarantine due to COVID, or they're experiencing symptoms of COVID, and they're seeking a medical diagnosis. Um, and then there's also, they also allow.
That seems to capture it, though, right there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I was just gonna say.
They're, they don't have a doctor order yet, but they're, you know, they're taking it. Yeah, I think that that does cover, uh, those, those folks who are experiencing. And we said cold and flu-like symptoms, because those were the COVID symptoms, but I think it's okay to say experiencing symptoms of COVID, as number three says.
Okay.
I, I think that, you know, we were, we were kind of ahead of, of this, and I, I think this language would cover uh, those employees.
Mm-hmm. Yep.
So we will allow our current leave policy, emergency leave policy, to expire, correct?
Yes.
Yeah. The only thing that I wanted to, that I wonder if, if we should try to keep from it, is the portion about immunocompromised would be able, and whatever that broader category was, would be able to take their own leave without, um, without having, uh, symptoms or, uh, a doctor's order. Janet, what do you think about that? Is, is anyone doing that? I mean, do, do you know? Do we have employees who have taken advantage of that?
I am not aware of that. I mean, it could be happening, but I'm not aware of it.
What do you guys think?
I think employees are trying to be safe. I think employees definitely are trying to be safe and think of themselves, absolutely.
Janet, what are you seeing with the call-off? I know you're tracking that daily for the EMA. How has the call-off rates been?
Um, actually, that's Jenna. Jenna's getting it.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, she's getting all the call-offs, and then she's been directed to Ryan, so I'm not, I'm not seeing those call-offs.
Okay.
But I could, I could check into it, though.
I was just curious to see, as we progress into this, what the call-off rates are doing.
Yeah.
If you could find that out for me, I, I'd be interested to see. Yeah. So Janet, do you need us then, if we keep, so if we're gonna keep that portion into our policy, then are we gonna draft a different policy? Are we gonna extend the current policy, because it sort of overlaps with this one? What are we gonna do in order to protect the autoimmune, or the, um, deficient immune people?
It's like the vulnerable groups.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, whereas, um, I think we could, I think we could, I mean, I think we might have to either draft a new one, just so it's not confusing with the rest of the policy.
Yeah.
Could you do, like, an addendum to this policy that's not just added on, but is a separate sort of addendum, and it would just include that provision, uh, from our earlier policy, and put that into effect? Um, let's not have it be in effect until December 31st, maybe let's do an additional 30 days on it, and, and then we can kind of see if anyone's taking advantage of it, or it, if it's helping. Um.
When do you want it to go into effect, Kathleen?
Um, I want it to stay in effect. I mean, currently, our, it's in effect, and it would just continue for 30 more days, and, and we can, we can just adopt it again in 30 days, just see how, how it's working.
Damn that policy.
And I would do it as an addendum, like a, a separate commissioner, uh, addendum to the policy. Does that make sense to you, Janet? Are you there, Janet?
Oh, no.
Lloyd, can you hear me now?
Yeah, yeah, you can.
Okay, okay. I was like, oh, no. Yeah, it makes sense. Yeah, so let me, I'll work on the addendum, and then, do you want it to be effective until May 3rd, because that'd be additional 30 days?
Yeah, have it be on a meeting day that it would expire, which could be May 3rd.
Okay.
Um, let me look.
I don't have my calendar.
No, it would be, uh, due, due April 30th.
Okay.
Or I'm sorry, why don't you go ahead and do May 7th?
Okay, May 7th.
May 7th.
Yeah.
Okay. That sounds good.
And if you need, if you want me to eyeball that, um, but I think your approval is here. Um, you don't need anything additional from us. Is that right, Sabrina and Vicky?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. Now, Janet, do you need us to pass the resolution then, today, approving the emergency family and medical leave expansion? Emergency pursuit to the, okay.
Yeah, and you should have it. I sent, um, Chris drafted up a resolution, I sent to Amy this morning, so I think you might have that in front of you.
Yeah, I have it.
Do you have it, Vicky?
Uh, yeah.
It came.
Resolution for BOC. Oh, you know what? I, yeah, here, I do have it, yes.
Okay.
Motion to approve, uh, providing of emergency family and medical leave expansion and emergency pursuant to the Family First Coronavirus Response Act as applicable to county employees.
I will second.
Roll call, Amy.
Vicky?
Yes.
Sabrina?
Yes.
Kathleen?
Yes. Should we do a journal entry or something for your
Expansion?
on the vulnerable population, Janet?
Yeah, that probably wouldn't be a bad idea.
Okay.
That might be. Yeah, at least it'll be in writing.
So, let me pull that up. I have it, I have it somewhere not too hard to find.
And then, um, I also drafted up the request for leave forms to use underneath.
Yeah.
Are you guys okay with that, with that form? It would be when employees are applying for either the expansion of the FMLA or the emergency sick leave underneath the Family First Act.
Yeah, I, I saw it, I thought it looked.
Okay.
Yeah, I agree.
Just to keep it clear, very clear and separate, and yeah, okay.
Give me just a moment, everyone.
So just to clarify, the only part of the entry that we have that's in effect, our policy, that's in effect to April 3rd, that we're gonna expand, is the, the immune for the most vulnerable folks? Is that the only part that we're gonna expand?
Yes.
Of that policy. Okay, I just wanted to clarify. Immunocompromised.
Hold on just a second, I'm, I'm thinking of a.
The verbiage of the journal entry?
Yeah, I have it here now in front. Yeah, I have it here now in front of me. So. I'll read the provision. It says employees, so I'll make a motion to extend. Uh, the provision from our temporary leave policy. Until May seventh that reads as follows. Employees who have a pre-existing respiratory condition or are otherwise immunocompromised. And who are therefore advised to self-isolate are permitted to use sick vacation and personal leave to stay home. These employees are encouraged to work from home to the greatest extent possible as determined with their supervisor and will receive credit for performing work during this time. Employees should track hours worked on a spreadsheet and attach it to their leave request, thereby reducing the amount of leave used. Cases where there is not enough paid leave to cover any portion of the employee's absence will be reviewed on a case by case basis. The requirement for a doctor's note is temporarily suspended.
I will second.
Roll call, Amy.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Sabrina?
Yes.
Vicky?
Yes.
Janet, I have one more question for you and it is our temp, temporary telework policy. I would want to, to be in place still. Is that the case or did we put in a, a time limit on that as well?
I, yeah, I don't.
I don't think we did.
I, I didn't see a date, no, it just says effective March sixteenth, so we did not put a deadline on it.
An end date, okay.
Okay, good, so that is still in effect.
Yes, uh huh.
Okay.
I have, I have a question just to verify, going back to setting up the interviews, who's going to be setting up the interview with the five applicants? Is that you, Janet?
Yes, unless you tell me different, but I assumed it was going to be me.
Yeah, I just want to confirm that, so. Amy's not thinking it's her.
Yeah, nope, that's good, nope, good question.
Thanks.
Thanks, Janet. So we have.
I just have, just a journal entry, yeah.
Okay. Do you want to, is there anything you want to explain on the journal entries or you just want us to go ahead? They look pretty standard.
Yeah, they're pretty standard. The um, the employee that's leaving job and family services, her last day isn't until April thirtieth. But her, so her exit interview will be scheduled before her last day. Um, if we're not in the office yet having in-person, she will complete the exit interview form. Um, you know, online and send it to us. At that point, by end of April, if we are taking in-person visits, then we would do that in person. But right now, right now, she'll probably just do the, um, complete the form and send it to Jenna.
Janet, is this the social worker? Is this, this isn't the one on Brady Lake Road, is it?
Uh huh.
It is?
Yeah, the group.
Yeah, it's group home. That's the only one we have.
Okay.
Okay. So Vicky, you going to make motions?
Move that the Board of Commissioners accept the resignation of a social service worker three group home effective April thirtieth, twenty twenty.
I will second.
Roll call, Amy.
Vicky?
Yes.
Sabrina?
Yes.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Move that the Board of Commissioners agree to authorize the three-day internal posting of the full-time social service worker three group home. For Portage County Job and Family Services with external posting if no internal appointment is made.
I'll second.
Roll call, Amy.
Vicky?
Yes.
Sabrina?
Yes.
Kathleen?
Yes. Okay.
Okay.
Janet, thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, bye-bye.
Bye.
Bye.
Are we ready for the miscellaneous items?
Believe it or not, I am ready.
Okay.
Except, I will say, I don't think that we've approved the March twenty fourth meeting minutes yet. So can we leave those out of the motion?
What about twenty six?
Oh, I see. Oh, yeah.
Those I think we have reviewed and we have reviewed the nineteenth, so.
It's just the twenty.
I just had, I just had the twenty fourth as not reviewed yet.
Okay.
Okay.
Amy, does that?
Is that right?
To you?
No, I'm not sure, I'd have to check with Julie.
She'd have to check with Julie.
Make sure, but yeah.
Let's hold off and do at our next meeting and since the twenty fourth, uh. Hold on a second. Was a special, the Tuesday, uh, we're definitely okay to hold off on that, so. But we're good on the nineteenth and the twenty sixth, we, we've already.
Commissioners approves the regular meeting. Uh, the regular meeting minutes of March nineteenth, twenty twenty and March twenty sixth, twenty twenty.
I'll second.
Roll call, Amy.
Vicky?
Yes.
Sabrina?
Yes.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Okay, the Board of, uh, move that the Board of Commissioners accepts the donations to the Office of Homeland Security and Emergency Management for COVID nineteen responses.
I'll second.
Roll call, Amy.
Vicky?
Yes.
Sabrina?
Yes.
Kathleen?
Yes. Then we have a journal entry, right?
Yes, yes.
I just don't have that in front of me.
And move the.
For the auditor report.
Yeah, I have it right here.
It was the last page.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Oh no, hold on.
Or at least it's my last page, I don't know.
I got it, I got it.
Move that the Board of Commissioners acknowledge receipt of the updated twenty twenty certificate of county auditor that the total appropriation. From each fund do not exceed. Estimate resources for the fiscal year beginning. January second, twenty twenty as presented by the Portage County Auditor.
I will second.
Roll call, Amy.
Vicky?
Vicky?
Yes, I didn't hear.
Yes.
Kathleen?
Yes. Is that it?
I think that's it.
Uh, thank you guys for your patience through our technical difficulties. Uh, and especially Amy and Sabrina for managing the sound issues on, on your end. Um. And we'll try to work these kinks out uh as, as we go forward and again, just thanks to anyone who tuned in for your patience and. Uh. Everyone stay safe and stay healthy and with that, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
Roll call, Amy.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Sabrina?
Yes.
Vicky?
Yes.
So then we'll meet again on Tuesday then for the interviews. At nine o'clock. Okay.
Okay, thanks all.
All right, bye.